Long time county employee and I have one. Our sympathies go out to his family and friends and coworkers, something like that. Let's move on to meeting the public comment.
Morning George.
Good morning.
George Stankovich Palialto, once again, I'm here for the senior citizens and veterans. I hope and pray that most of them are getting their appeal notices, the ones that are want to appeal.
Well, George, because of that, we've put, we had the opposite senior services put the appeal forms and pamphlets at every senior center.
I know that.
And we're also sending them to every single veterans organization in Scoopel County with a pamphlet with the appeal form.
And I'm sure they appreciate that. Thank you for that.
We made sure they got out to everybody.
So, yeah, but still, there's, there's those ones that don't come to the senior centers and don't know about it. Because there's different programs out there they never heard of, you know, the food program for the farmers. They, ninety percent of them that come in into the center, they don't even, they just found out about it. And if it wasn't from a friend or somebody telling them, they never know. This one lady said, how long has this gone? I said, it's going on for years. I said, but it is hard to get the information out. So word of mouth is what's really doing the job. So I just want to say that, please, the ones that haven't, make sure you have to have an appeal form into the assessment office, or they won't hear your appeal. So you gotta get an appointment date and everything like that. They'll, they'll set some time up for you. Yes, you only get fifteen minutes, I heard, at the meeting, but I hope and pray that each and every one of you that are out there that hear my voice or hear somebody talking to you about it, please, if you're really disgusted, I had a lady that I know that came into the center. Her assessment was, on the O assessment, was fifteen thousand. Now it's a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars.
Two hundred and seven thousand.
There you go.
A thousand dollars off the tax.
No, you can make your public comment when you work with a question.
Okay, I don't know how it works.
I'm saying, no problem.
No, that's okay. What you go, and I'm just saying, you know, she's going to me, I'm, I'm going up from nine hundred total to over twenty-one hundred dollars. Now, how is a person who's on a set income gonna afford twelve hundred dollars more? I want, I want the politicians to look into this. This is ridiculous. We're on set incomes. She said to me, what am I supposed to do? You heard the lady last week. She, well, she has to put things off now if she's gonna afford to pay the property tax. Was she not gonna take her medication? Or pay her other bills? You know, it's coming down to this type of situation. That's why you're seeing for sale signs going up in Scoopel County, right and left. I don't care what anybody says. Realtors from out of state are coming in, buying his homes, fixing them up, and then charging outrageous rates for people to live in those homes. This is ridiculous. Honest people that worked their whole life. They need a break. They need to know that the government is actually working for the people. They're not working for the people. I don't care who. I've talked to Ardel, I have talked to George so many times, it's not even funny. My friend wants me to go down to see Shapiro. He, he thinks that I'm afraid to talk. I'm not afraid to talk to any po-. They work or supposed to work for the people. They're working against the people. That's what the problem is. These guys are making triple figures and they don't understand people that are under the poverty level are the ones that are getting hurt the most. Okay, and that's where, and it happens all the way from the presidency all the way down. They don't understand.
Laura Krasniewski, Potsville, I'm gonna read very quickly. Because we have a human stopwatch, okay? The uniformity of Pennsylvania Constitution, Chapter Eight, Section One, says, "The uniformity of taxes, all taxes shall be uniform upon the same class of subjects." I timely notified the city of Potsville that ABOKA codes and the international property maintenance codes were being violated. When the city failed to do something, I was response, it was on me to go to the county tax assessor's office and report it to the county tax assessor's office. I reported it to the county tax assessor's office. They went out and measured and concluded that there were in fact building enlargements, additions being done without building and zoning permits. Okay, the workers, excuse me. Chapter, Title Fifty-three, Chapter Eighty-eight, Section Sixty-one, Subsection Eighty-eight, Sixty-one. Submission of permits and substantial improvement information to the county assessor's office and civil penalty. Okay, so the county assessor's office, when they went out and measured, said, yes, this is in fact going on. And I said last week that the county had a duty to file an action in mandamus because you have a financial interest in the taxation, the, the value of properties throughout the county. It was easy to get away with it when you didn't have assessment appeals for twenty years. But what happened is, no public official who was notified that BOKA codes and international property maintenance codes were being violated, took any action. So when the city failed to respond and the county did not comply with Title Fifty-three, Chapter Eighty-eight, Subsections, Section Sixty-one, Subsection Eighty-eight, Sixty-one, non-compliance, I ended up having to file an action in the Court of Common Pleas. But what the county did do at that time was the county decided that they were gonna remove acreage from my property and lower my taxes based on a survey that I had submitted. The county responded by making the acreage change and removing ground from my property and reassessing my taxes. Had the, had the county complied with Title Fifty-three, Chapter Eighty-eight, Section Sixty-one, Subsection Eighty-eight, Sixty-one, the matter would have been timely resolved. Instead, I, when I, after I filed the motion in the Court of Common Pleas, Judge Russell basically looked at me and said, "You must pay your taxes and we'll deal with this later." Well, we were allowed to not deal with it for ten years because we didn't have a reassessment. So she looks at me and says, "But you have to pay your ta- we'll deal with it later." Ten years later, it still has not been dealt with. I contacted three separate tax appraisers, real estate appraisers, and all three said, "We cannot find a property to compare it to so that we could come up with evaluation." All three sides of the rear of my property are encroached on. My building has been basically attached onto. My exterior wall is being used as the interior wall of somebody else's property. And nothing has been done by law. I mean, the law really clearly read what the county was supposed to do. But the tax assessor's office no longer knows what the responsibilities are. Just as the recorder of deeds, do you want me to shut up? He says shut up.
You can finish your statement.
Thank you very much.
She did not tell you to shut, he did not.
Well, basically, basically, that's what that means. When you say you're done, just sit down and shut up.
Well, listen, instead of arguing, finish your state.
I'm trying to, yeah. Because, okay, so, well, now you've completely discombobulated the thoughts. But the bottom, the bottom line is that nobody is really apparently complying with the law. Nobody seems to remember what the duties were of these offices when they were set up. That if the tax assessor's office does not know that it has a duty to file an action in mandamus, when anybody in the county comes in and says to the tax assessor's office, "There are building enlargements and additions going on without permits, you have a duty to act." And as a matter of fact, it's supposed to come down, and I believe it's the Department of Labor and Industry is supposed to come in and verify that all of these things are in fact being corrected. Because you have a financial interest in, in these properties, you float bonds on them and supposedly you're fairly collecting revenue. I'm here to tell you, you're not fairly collecting revenue, and it's gonna be very interesting to see what the courts do with this.
Any other public comment? You wanna go, sir?
Yes. Not as detailed as this woman was.
Say your name.
My name is Thomas Curry, and I live on property thirteen Mill Creek Avenue, Potsville. I would like to know how they did this reassessment. Raising my property taxes as much as they did up to two hundred and seven thousand dollars. With the properties that sat down below me, I would never, ever sell my home for two hundred and seven thousand dollars. It's eleven hundred square acre. Or eleven, whatever, one thousand eight hundred, eight, or square footage. Two bedroom home. And they brought that price in at two hundred and seven thousand dollars. I've been fighting cancer, for Christ's sake. I'm on social security disability. How the hell can I afford to pay another thousand dollars a year on property taxes? And there's a lot of other people in that same predicament right now in Scoopel County. This is a very depressed area. You go to rent homes, people can't even rent homes. They're over twelve hundred dollars to rent an apartment for some kid. This is ridiculous. Who were these people to come in here to do this reassessment? They weren't even from our area, and you did this at a high price when all housings were going up. It was very unfair to all the people in Scoopel County for what is done. And it'll never go back down. Yous will keep it there, and people are gonna lose their damn properties, and that's exactly what I think yous want to happen.
No, you're completely wrong.
I, I don't feel that way.
You're completely wrong.
You know, you want my street.
No, wait, hold on. Not one commissioner here wants you to lose your property.
I'm scared to death to lose my house. I mean, seriously, sir.
The county was sued into this reassessment.
Sued?
Yes, there's a cono- we've said this a thousand times. A company is a nonprofit out of Philadelphia is suing counties in the reassessment because the state has not fixed this problem. Counties were the last state in the entire country that has not fixed reassessment. Counties are being sued because, well, actually, Lisa brought it up about the uniformity of taxation. By certain areas being spot appealed and not appealed, people's property taxes values are all over the place and are out of luck, and they shouldn't be. Because they haven't done a reassessment in thirty years. But there is nobody that, I want everybody to be in their home. If it was up to me, I'd eliminate. If I had the power to do it, I'd do it on the sales tax or something, or find a way to lessen the burden on your property taxes. Because I believe you should have your property free and clear.
Okay, okay. So they put a three mil tax on us last year, right before they knew that they're gonna raise the taxes on us. So that's three mils we had to pay there, plus my, our taxes, mine are going up a thousand dollars. Well, how can I afford that?
But that's not just all the county.
And then you hear people that have like newer homes, their property taxes are going down. Now, I don't understand that. I take care of my property. I keep it nice. But did you walk Nickel Street there, where I live, up above the hill? I live on Mill Creek. Them houses are dilapidated. Nothing's being done to that. The weeds are growing out of sidewalks, around telephone poles. All the properties are terrible. And now they're telling me that my houses worth two hundred and seven thousand dollars. I would never sell it for that with those properties.
Did you put down, file for a formal appeal?
I did, sir.
And that's what we're telling everyone. If you don't think it's right, do the formal appeal. Take pictures, take pictures around your property. If you're saying that's how the properties are around you, take pictures of it. If you have a recent appraisal, if you've got a bank loan or a HELOC, or if you got anything and you have a recent appraisal within the last three years, they'll, they'll look at that. Take as much information as you possibly can to make the argument that your value is less.
And face what you said to me. Don't we pay somebody in that office down there to go around and find these people that don't take care of their properties?
That's not the county. The city does. Laura, the city, that's, if it's possible, it's the city. They have their own zoning plan. They, they have all their own code enforcement. The county doesn't have code enforcement, like municipality. That's a city issue. We cannot make the city, we cannot make the city. We can, Laura, I'm not gonna argue with you if we can't.
Okay.
You had your public comment. You had your public comment. We cannot oversee it, oversee their, what they're mandated by law at Potsville. We can't.
I had something, and I forgot what I was gonna say. I just.
Listen, nobody's happy about this. My taxes are going up. I, I don't want anybody's taxes to go up. None, nobody does. We were sued into this, I completely disagree with.
How does the lawsuit fit into this?
They, because we were ordered by a judge to do the full reassessment. We were ordered by a court order. We entered into an agreement with the courts because we were sued. And they were, because the county hasn't done a reassessment in thirty years.
But at the highest prices of housings that were up, they did this reassessment.
I, I understand that completely, and that's why I'm an advocate for counties should do reassessment every four years. Because that way, if, if, say the market drops, you catch that. If you wait another thirty years and say this is the highest point values of the property.
Market drops.
And say it drops down, it just stays high no matter what.
You can't even get a realtor to come in and reassess your property to fight this thing.
Appraiser.
An appraiser, yes. You call him, you don't get him. Because you know what? Everybody's going after him, and nobody has the time to come in and do that.
That's why with these appeal process is a administrative appeal. It's not our normal appeal process every year, so they'll take more things into consideration. The boards will take in location, pictures. If you have, if I'm right, Chrissy, an appraisal for the last three years. If it's, if a bank appraisal, if you got a, a home equity line of credit, they did an appraisal. They'll take a lot more stuff into consideration at these appeal boards than in a normal appeal year.
In two thousand and ten, up until now, my taxes went up three hundred bucks. Now, I don't understand that. Nothing done to the home. The house was given to me from my grandfather when he passed away. But yet my taxes went up. And now they're going up again. They raised, excuse me, they raised it for the three mil. That was illegal. Because they turned around and raised it now again for this reassessment. That should have never been allowed.
No, that is not true.
That's not true?
No.
I'm sorry, okay.
No, wait, hold on. The county cannot raise ta- there's, there's no taxes raised. They were raised in twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, three months. They're not, in twenty twenty-six, when we do our budget in twenty-six, we're capped. We cannot take in. If we take in ten million dollars in twenty twenty-four, during the reassessment year, we're still gonna take in exactly ten million dollars.
But they took me three mil in. And now, now it's gonna be another grand they're taking off of me.
Well, yeah, but okay, not that I'm, so if you're paying a thousand more, that means somebody around you is, or homes around you are paying a little less. Because of.
So I'm paying, I'm paying for theirs is what you just told me.
No, you're not paying theirs. It's on what the value of the properties are assessed at. The county, the municipality, and the school district during the reassessment year will take in the exact same levy. The amount of money they took in in twenty twenty-five is exactly what we'll take in in twenty twenty-six.
So they appraised my house versus the ones up behind you, up above?
I don't know.
Those brand new homes?
No, they might have went up. I don't know. Some people, like over at Mockwood, there's people that went down. There's some people that went up. It's, it's all over the place.
Well, tell me that when I'm living under a bridge.
Well, I hope you're not.
It's gonna happen. Because we, we medical bills with my wife, now she may be dealing with cancer, and I'm only getting social security disability. How the hell do I afford it?
I'm sorry, sir. Any other public comment? Jeff Shirley wants to go. And Shirley, the microphone, she doesn't have the microphone.
I don't need the mic. Right, Lucas didn't have it the other week.
Okay, but just.
So I don't need it. Thank you. Shirley Biker from Goliath. Since the reassessment has been the last few months of all the meetings. Last week, Mr. Dora stated that the problem, as, as I took his inference, the problem lies in Harrisburg. I took it upon myself that's all Harrisburg. And you are correct, Pennsylvania is the only state that doesn't have a term limit. However, I was also told it is the discretion of the Board of Commissioners to assign or request a reassessment at any point in time. And how often they want to do it. Perhaps your predecessors didn't want a tax assessment attached to their name for possible political apparition.
Yeah, thirty years.
Or maybe on the advice of counsel. Or maybe they just didn't want the tax reassessment attached to their name, you know. So here we are, thirty years later, trying to figure out how to move forward and retain our properties. Meanwhile, all the Scoop, all the property owners in Scoopel County suffer because the occupants of those seats did not want a reassessment on their watch. Had at least one, just one reassessment been done over time, perhaps this huge increase wouldn't have fallen at one, on all the property owners now. The ultimate measure of a man or a woman is not where they stand in moments of comfort and controversy or convenience, but it is at times of challenges. So in conclusion, one must take the position that is neither state, political or popular, but take the position that is right. Lightning makes no sound until it strikes. Thank you.
And surely, that's why I'm an advocate for doing it every four years. Four to five years seems to be what every other state does, that I've found. Some do a rolling thing. They do a third of the county one year, they do a third of the county another year, they do a third of the county another year. But overall, it's a four or five year process. And, you know, Harris, the only reason I'm saying Harrisburg needs to fix this, they leave us up to get sued, but they don't, they don't offer us any funding for it. They don't offer us anything. They go, here you go, deal with it, like they do everything.
But it still remains at the discretion of the county officials. And I'm not calling this board entirely. We have had many boards before, even women of different political parties. It didn't matter who was there.
Because reassessment, because of the timeframe that you wait to do it, has a stigma around it that it's a bad. Reassessments bad. It raises your taxes. Reassessments bad if you wait thirty years. Reassessment like up in Lackawanna County, they waited fifty years to do a reassessment. Lancaster County is now doing it, I think every five years. Lancaster County took it upon themselves that every five years Lancaster County is doing a reassessment. And after this reassessment's over, we have a lot on our plate now, I want to explore that we'll do a reassessment every four to five years. I want to meet with the school districts to make sure nobody's spot assessing. Like, will, the county will do a reassessment, but I don't want any spot assessments. Because the spot assessments are what threw everything completely out of luck that we got sued because the ratios were all over the place from, from one area of county to another area of county. Like homes weren't taxed at the same amount. So that's why I'm advocating for it being fixed. And I have a meeting tonight at six o'clock. A meeting where some of our state legislators and our senator, and I'm bringing this up again to them. That this needs to be fixed. And that counties need alternate sources of revenue.
So has any of the Board of Commissioners in the last thirty years took it upon themselves, tracked on this end, and made the decision to reassess? We wouldn't be in this position today. That's only my opinion. Thank you.
You're correct, sir. They was picked down the road.
That's, that's, I agree.
I got here in twenty twenty. This was picked, it was picked down the road. And was picked down the road. Nobody wants to reassess because of the.
Well, I'm tired of candidates.
No, I, I, and.
I agree, correct.
And I agree, it needs, I wanna, I'm, I'm taking a very hard look at trying to make this cyclical. Because that way, nobody will have a heavy increase in their value at one time. They won't have a heavy increase in their taxation at the levy at one time. If you do it every four or five years, it's, and you'll catch, if the market goes down, you'll catch you'll catch the ebbs and flows of the market. So, yep, I, trust me, I've learned so much about reassessment in a year and seven months, more than I want to. But I agree, Shirley. Any other public comment?
Morning, Jeff.
Jeff Dunkel, Palo Alto. Appreciate you doing that moment of silence for Mr. Sharon. He's a, he was a great employee and great community member, fire chief, so on. Nobody had the decency to recognize him when he retired from the county, so I guess now that he passes, we're gonna recognize him, but may he rest in peace. He was a good man. No update on Lisa Stevens. I see Gaffney was in the building. Must be another tour for some summer group or something. She could be here to explain herself about her claim on FMLA, why she works less than a hundred hours a week. That office seems like it's the final round of the Home Run Derby up there, if you've watched that. Final round of the Home Run Derby. If you watched that, you'll know what it means. Uh, but moving on to the reassessment, these people that are speaking, it's it's mind blowing. Relation to your property up there by Pineview Acres. I know somebody up there that, a couple people that have properties that spoke out to me that theirs went up more than a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars in value. One gentleman, his went up twenty-four hundred dollars just in taxes. Some people have their properties listed at over six hundred thousand that they wouldn't even be able to get three to four hundred thousand. It's, it's mind blowing. I have a property that went from nineteen thousand, being taxed at, to a hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Another one of five thousand, went up to ninety thousand. You know, they snuck through this fifty percent taxation to a hundred percent taxation. He's didn't even advertise it properly. Had to be rushed through at the end. So now everybody's getting, let me finish. Everybody's getting taxed on a hundred percent of your property, which you might not even know that, Mr.. Okay, so it used to be taxed.
Once again, stop, no, I can stop at time. Yes, you're being taxed a hundred percent of the value, but the millage rate, Jeff's advocating we go to fifty percent of the value. So say, no, hold on, no, it's not that. The taxation is the value of the property. If we did fifty percent, say, we did fifty percent, say the county millage is gonna drop down to four mils after the reassessment. If we do fifty percent, the county millage will drop to eight mils.
Correct.
That's all that means, is the adjustment of the millage rate.
Correct.
Okay.
But you're still taxed at a hundred percent of that property value moving forward for any raises from twenty twenty-six to, to the end of time.
Like if the county needs, like if we needed in two thousand.
And the properties are valued outrageously more.
Two thousand twenty-four.
You can keep giving the, listen, you can keep giving, hang on.
That's the fact.
Now, will you let me talk? Will you let me talk?
Just like.
Why do you keep cutting people off? You're just like him.
No, I'm not, Jeff. You don't like anybody to counter anything you say.
Do it at the end. That's the way it used to be done. Oh, it's your meeting now, just like he used to say. My meeting.
It's an interaction day.
Okay.
But that's what you said, no, hold on. You want an interaction.
Why don't you wait till the end?
Your big complaint always was.
Everybody was always at the end.
Jeff, your big complaint was, nobody answered me, nobody talked to me, nobody would respond to me. You tried to.
Thirty-two days. How about that email thirty-two days ago?
Tim Barr said he's gonna respond to. I don't know the answers. Paul Dotty said he's going to a Tim Barr.
And you, it wasn't sent to Tim Barr. It was you and Paul Dotty, thirty-two days ago.
You sent the email to Tim Barr. So, but you said, you want a, you want an interaction. You want answers.
Go ahead, answer, good. You just did, and I countered it.
And like, you bring stuff up, or you bring up Teresa.
Yes.
The only person in a year and seven months that has complained about Teresa Gaffney has been you.
Oh, listen, 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 there is a lot of people, a lot of people. She works, listen, anybody, listen, any taxpayer.
Here is the paperwork that you said you were gonna bring me that we.
I already told you what it was.
No, you said you were bringing me.
And I, and I told Mr. Dotty what it was. And Shelby, and when Shelby was here.
You said you were gonna.
Yeah, but you just have to worry about covering up the right to knows with Shelby that was already submitted. We won't get into that. Yeah, we won't get into those right to knows that are filed and going through the courts. Wait till the people find out about that. So anyway, back to the reassessment. Mr. Heatherington was on record saying it could have been fought for a hundred thousand dollars. Instead, we spend seven point five, it'll probably end up being ten million dollars. So it could have been fought for a hundred thousand dollars. Maybe kick the can down the road like you do with everything else. That could have been, maybe get the property values on the dip that yous are talking about. Or maybe you could have made an agreement with the courts, hey, we're gonna do it on the property values before the inflated properties went up. Just an idea, but.
You didn't have the opportunity to do that.
And I know you weren't here, a hundred percent, but there were other people here, and the can was kicked down the road, a hundred percent. And now the people on fixed income, social security, disability, they're the ones, they are gonna lose their homes. And I hear, I'll bet you I had two, three hundred phone calls and messages in the last three weeks. Nobody can understand those forms. They're worried about losing their homes. You know, they're making decisions, and it's tough, you know? Mr. Barr says at a public meeting that on July first, the property, you're gonna be able to view your neighbor's properties and do comparisons, and you could bring that to the, to the hearing. That's the impression I was under, right? You were at the same meeting. Now you can't do that. You can't bring neighborhood valuations in. It has to be sales of properties that were nearby during an inflated housing market. So when I have a house that's at a hundred eighty-seven thousand now, and everybody else on my block has more square footage and more acreage, and is sixty to seventy thousand dollars less, I know it's because I get up here every week and talk. Because, okay, then if somebody can explain that to me, but I can't.
That is, that, listen.
But now, listen, now I can't go to a meeting or a formal appeal and use that. Because I have to use any tax se- or any property sales. I can't use the evaluation that he specifically said on record, I have the meeting recorded, that July first, the neighborhood properties, you'd be able to look at your neighbors, you were at the same meeting, Larry, and that we would be able to use that. So again, that it's nonsense. This whole thing is for uniformity, as everybody claims. Wouldn't it be uniform to have my whole block relatively within the same ballpark? I'm sixty to seventy thousand dollars more than every other place. There's a gentleman with two hundred more square foot and about a quarter more acre, and he's seventy-seven thousand dollars less than me. Make it make sense. I'm just gonna continue.
I'm gonna finish your statement.
You know, the older people are scared, or they can't afford it. Some people are.
And we're reaching out to, we're reaching out to.
They think it's funny, I guess, I don't know.
I'm reaching out, I'm trying to get the information out there. I don't know how else to do it. We've put it in the senior centers, we're sending it to all the veterans' places. It was mailed out to everybody. We're trying to, I'm trying to get it out there as much as I possibly can.
I get it, but, you know, these people can't afford a two hundred dollar increase, but then it's gonna cost two thousand dollars to get in an appraiser, a lawyer. You're saying that you don't need a lawyer, but then you're also saying you're able to use your neighborhood properties, and now you can't do that. So if you do all the research, you can't even take that with you. These lawyers and appraisers are cashing in left and right on these people, the vulnerable people, and it's just not fair.
Well, they should be doing that.
I mean, he should be here every week during this thing, because you guys, you guys are taking it in front of it. I have it in email from yesterday. I could show it to you after the meeting. Came right from him. But the gentleman's right about the, the housing market. According to a realtor I spoke to, it's the highest amount of rentals on the MLS department, MLS website in over a decade in Schuylkill County. I do, and that's why they are.
I just can't.
But if people can't afford that, they're not gonna be able to afford to stay in their homes. It's, I, I said two years ago, in twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine, the tax sale list for the county is gonna be sky high because everybody's gonna lose their property.
I hope that's right. Any other public comment?
Morning, Melinda. Uh, Melinda Diabert, North Mannheim Township. Uh, okay, let's hit on the row officers, not at the courthouse, as of around, I don't know, nine forty-five this morning. Uh, noticeably absent, our recorder of deeds and our clerk of courts for the county. Maybe some of the other row officers, except for Sharon, are only showing up on Wednesdays when the commissioners' meetings are held. I don't know. I will say taxpayers and voters of the county are tired of this. How many of us can show up maybe part-time or not at all for our jobs and still receive a full-time paycheck and benefits? I dare say not too many people can do that. We are sick and tired of it. Bottom line, if you want me to shut up, then you need to show up. Now, especially with this reassessment and everybody getting hit, we think, not everybody, but most everybody, getting hit with higher taxes coming down the pike. Why, can, can we not even still now go back and pull sales comps from two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen? It's my understanding we're using sales comps for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. Is that correct? Okay, the absolute highest artificially inflated sales comps. So again, my question, can we not go back and just pull the sales comps from eighteen and nineteen and maybe throw those in there and take out, I would say definitely take out twenty twenty-one? Because that's when we had a ton of New York and New Jersey people, especially New York, coming down. Uh, Massachusetts, a Boston couple bought a house in our, I think I've told you about this before, bought a shimmy shack in our neck of the woods, maybe, should have gone for a hundred grand. It went for over three hundred thousand dollars. So that is one of the sales comps that's gonna be used in my so-called neighborhood when somebody goes to try to do a formal appeal. Can, can we not go back, isn't that just a, a matter of like punching a few strokes on the keyboard and pulling up the eighteen and nineteen values and putting those into the mix? Instead of just going with twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three sales comps? Can we not do that now?
I don't know what you're talking about. It's like you have a certain value in a certain village, you lower the value of the resources up. It's, it's just, it's the slightest change.
No, Boots, you're not getting what I'm saying. When people show up for these formal appeals, they are supposed to be taking into account comparable sales, comparable to their own property. Square footage, bedrooms, bathrooms, and then lot size, et cetera. They're supposed to be preferably pulling from their own neighborhood within a one-mile radius of their home. If you're looking at sales comps during the COVID years, that's when property values were the highest. Real estate agents now will even tell you that the market is starting to bottom out now. It's starting to level off. This is twenty twenty-five.
I don't know about that. We're just looking at it. The prices are high. Go ahead, finish your statement.
All, all I'm asking is that, aren't there like maybe a couple of variables or things that we can look at to try to make things, you know, normal? A little bit more normal? Because I'm telling you, looking at those values, that's when everything was the highest, and that's what our properties are being judged against, those sales. Another thing for appraisers, appraisers are gonna make out hand over fist on this. Could the county not, could you guys please try to set up something where you have an approved list of appraisers? It's my understanding, and somebody, y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding, if you go to do an appraisal, it's around five hundred bucks, somewhere, somewhere in that ballpark. Could we not try to have a list of appraisers, approved appraisers, who would be willing to cut that fee in half to maybe around two hundred and fifty dollars to make it a little bit easier for some of these folks on a fixed income and senior citizens to be able to even afford to do an appraisal?
I won't even get an appraisal. I've called three or four times. They'll call back.
Okay.
If you're not even gonna get one.
Wow. Talk about job security, amazing. Okay, one other thing I'm gonna throw out there, which people may not be aware of. There is something called a comparative market analysis, a CMA. And it's my understanding, so you might wanna look into this, sir, that a CMA can be done for around a hundred dollars, maybe less. But a CMA, what that does is, it puts your property into the system, and they try to pull three relatively recent sales, preferably within the last six months, within a one-mile radius of your property, just to see if your reassessed value is somewhere in the ballpark of those recent sales. So it's, it's called a CMA, it's a comparative market analysis, and it's my understanding that, um, agents like realtors can do that. It does not have to be a certified appraiser to, uh, to conduct that for you.
Who was the site figure house sale up the street from my house going for a hundred seventeen thousand? I'd have held you go for one seventeen to two hundred and seven.
It's not a debate, okay?
Okay, I just wanted to put that out there because I'm not sure if, uh, the public is, is aware of that avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Nope. Can we move on with the meeting? Grant writers.
Morning, Ryan. I'm here to request to advertise for a CDBG street rehab project in Butler Township. Bids will be done via Penn bid. It must be submitted by nine AM on Wednesday, August thirteenth, at which time they will be open. Also request to advertise for a CDBG street rehab project in the borough of Shenandoah. Bids will be done via Penn bid and also on the same day, and will be open. Um, a third one also requests to advertise for a CDBG drainage project in the borough of McAdoo um, on the same day. Request to advertise for demolition projects in Girardville, Tamaka, Shenandoah, and St. Clair. Bids are due in the controller's office on Monday, August eleventh at four PM, and the bid opening will take place on Wednesday, August thirteenth with the other Penn bid ones. Approval, approved a three-year contract with B&amp;B Environmental for asbestos assessments at a cost of four hundred and fifty dollars for residential properties and five hundred and fifty dollars for non-residential properties. The contract will run from July first, twenty twenty-five, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Award a contract in amount of two hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars to the recreation, to Recreation Resource LLC for a CDBG project at the Willow Street Park in Schuylkill Haven. And last, approve a revision to the twenty twenty-one CDBG program moving eighteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars from the Minersville demo line item to the Minersville housing rehab line item.
Thank you. Adult probation?
Morning, sir.
Good morning.
CG Bagansky, adult probation. Uh, we have two items on the agenda for your approval. Uh, the first is an approval, um, for a contract with Pennsylvania Counseling Service Incorporated to provide counseling services as described for a period of one year, beginning August first, twenty twenty-five through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And this is for sex offender counseling, and the price menu is attached. Our second contract we're asking approval on is a contract with Ally Universal Electronic Monitoring US Incorporated to provide electronic monitoring services as described for a period of two years, beginning August first, twenty twenty-five, and ending August first, twenty twenty-seven.
This is for the ankle monitor?
Yes.
And is this the company from Flora?
Um, I'm not certain exactly where they're from.
CJ, about how many do we have on?
About thirty offenders currently on house arrest.
Thank you. Children, youth?
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Holly Sorski for children and youth. We have four items today. Uh, an addendum to the agreement with United Charities Inc., West Hazleton, PA, dated August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, extending its term period to include fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six at current rates and terms with an end date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. An addendum to the agreement with Guide Spring Inc., Milton, PA, dated September eleventh, twenty twenty-four, extending its term period to include twenty-five, twenty-six at current rates and terms with an end date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. An addendum to the agreement with Kits Peace National Centers Inc., Schnecksville, PA, dated June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, to adjust a rate and include fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. This addendum adjusts the rate for Kits Peace Residential Treatment, PRTF, to seven hundred dollars per diem, and amends the end date to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And lastly, approval of an agreement with Tegna Broadcast Holding LLC doing business as WNEPTV for foster parent recruitment advertising. Terms include twenty commercials monthly on WNEP television stations at three thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars per month with a total contract cap of forty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars with a term of September first, twenty twenty-five to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Thank you.
Office of Senior Services? Morning. Morning.
Brian Campbell with Office of Senior Services. We're asking for approval of an addendum with why a missing behavioral analyst of Harrisburg, PA, to extend the contract in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. The rates will remain the same as fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five for psychological evaluations, diagnostic testing, interviews, behavior assessments, and court testimony. Uh, the contract cap will be reduced from thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars to thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six.
Drug and alcohol? Morning. Morning.
John Ray, drug and alcohol, on behalf of Elaine Gilbert. We, asking the approval of, of contract with Chor Youth and Family Services Incorporated out of Reading, Pennsylvania, for the period of July first, twenty twenty-five, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six to provide the Schuylkill County Nurse Family Partnership Program with a contract cap of five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and four dollars. Also the approval of a contract with Schuylkill Community Action, Potsville, PA, for the period of June first, twenty twenty-five to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, to provide prevention education event. Schuylkill Community Action will partner with the Schuylkill County Drug and Alcohol Prevention Team to facilitate the Summer Blast Program with a contract cap of twenty-eight thousand, ten dollars. Approval of the agreement with Service Access and Management Incorporated, Reading, Pennsylvania, for the period of July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, to assist the county with the operations of the Drug and Alcohol Sor Housing Program with a contract cap of one hundred and eighteen thousand. Requesting approval of the following addendums for the list of providers who are extending the expiration date for six months from June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. Um, as per the extension modification agreement, all other current terms, conditions, services, and rates will be continued through the period of this extension. And those providers are Center for Community Resources Incorporated, Child Development Incorporated, Hill County Wellness doing business as Burke's AIDS Network and Schuylkill Wellness Services, Lehigh Valley Hospital Schuylkill Counseling Center, and this is for their Healthy Life Skills Group, um, contract, New Roots Incorporated, Just Community Incorporated, um, also includes an updated appendix B, um, which I just recently found out that they, um, we were just notified that they actually closed their doors as of June thirtieth, so that contract will not be, be going through. Um, New Directions Treatment Services will also include add-in language as follows. For all services that's listed in their appendix B, initial authorization request for SCA funding must be entered into CPR web system no later than seven days after the client's admission date in order to receive approval of SCA funding. Um, for their following services that's, uh, be limited as follows. Level one point zero is outpatient services. They'll have an initial three-month authorization request, which they can follow up by an additional three months reauthorization request. And the same level goes for level two point one, intensive outpatient services. And we also, lastly, we have approval of the following list of providers who also are extending their expiration date for six months, and also, uh, as per the extension modification agreement, and all the other terms will be, uh, consistent and remain the same. And however, these providers will also, uh, increase their contract caps. Uh, so Child and Family Support Services, they increased their contract cap from five hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents to five hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. We have Geisinger St. Luke's Hospital increased their contract cap from fifty-four thousand to sixty-three thousand. Sage Action Consulting will increase their contract cap from fifty-three thousand, five hundred to seventy-four thousand. Service Access and Management Incorporated, uh, for their fiscal services, will increase their contract cap from a hundred and forty-four thousand to a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Um, Pennsylvania Counseling Services Incorporated to increase their contract cap from two hundred and sixty-three thousand, seventy-six dollars to three hundred and thirty-two thousand, ninety-five dollars. And lastly, Lehigh Valley Hospital Counseling Center for their in-depth vaping program to increase their contract cap from nineteen thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-two cents to twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. And they will also include an updated appendix B and appendix D. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Good morning, commissioners. Today I'm seeking, seeking the approval for the change orders for the prison addition project um, for a smoke exhaust system as required by the Uniform Construction Code in the city of Potsville. Uh, D&amp;M Construction Unlimited, the change order is six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-two cents for a total contract amount of six hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. ANS Energy Systems, their change order amount is twenty-five thousand, one hundred dollars for a total contract amount of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred dollars. And Alverell Electric, their change order is eighteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-one cents, and their total contract amount will be one hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-one cents.
This, uh, you got change in the project or? Why, why, what, if this was part of the Uniform Construction Code, why wasn't this part of the bid?
Well, supposedly that there is already a smoke exhaust system, but with the addition, they wanted a new standalone that the city was requiring that in order for them to get their building.
So the city of Potsville was required.
And, and also part of the Uniform Construction Code, yes. Yes, so I am told.
Okay. Thank you. Close this office.
Good morning, commissioners. Um, just one quick other additional comment. Um, as the treasurer, I've been helping, um, taxpayers as well each and every day with answers, questions. Chrissy, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, the appeals have to be filed by April eleventh. Appraisals need to be done by the date of your hearing. Or I'm sorry, Aug, I'm sorry, August eleventh. Or I'm sorry, August, I'm sorry, August 11th. August 11th and then your appraisals have to be done by the date of your hearing. They don't have to be done by August 11th, which I think is what, putting everybody into a flurry.
They don't need an appraisal.
And Chrissy's saying it's not mandatory for an appraisal, but it is an option. But I think the appraisers are getting inundated with phone calls thinking they have to have the calls and the appraisals done by the appeal, appeal date of August 11th, and they're not. So just wanted to clarify that. Sorry about the date, Chrissy. And then for the treasurer's report, um, for the account ending, uh, June 2025, ending balance on all accounts, $109,636,289.60.
Slusser's office? Finance office?
Uh, just one item, the budget adjustment, commissioners, uh, for the prison.
Thank you. County administrator?
On behalf of the Luzern Schuylkill Workforce Development Board, Google's requested to accept the annual budget of the Luzern Schuylkill Workforce Development Board. On the recommendation by the Luzern Schuylkill Workforce Development Board's finance and executive committees, Workforce Development Board accepted the projected budget for the program year term of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026 with a 7.36% increase over the program year budget. And also on behalf of SETCO, approve a support letter to include Schuylkill County within the service area of foreign trade zone 147. Understand that this means that the grantee FTC Corp. of Southern Pennsylvania will be able to apply to the foreign trade zones board regarding to serve sites located within Schuylkill County based on businesses' trade-related needs. We also note the zone will be made available on a uniform basis to companies within Schuylkill County in a manner consistent with the legal requirement that each FTC be operated as a public. And immediate approvals requested to sign the support letter.
Make a motion for the SETCO question.
Is that good? One question?
Mr. Fedora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. House?
Yes. Human resources?
Uh, good morning, commissioners. Uh, in the prison, we have the transfer of Joseph Corrali, correction officer, full-time and part-time. Early contract effective 7/14/25 at the hourly rate 25.438. In children and youth, promotion of Patricia Lee, the clerk type is three. The rate is 18.43 affected 7/14/25 coming from clerk type is two. Three items in the office of senior services to our appointments. Amy Newton and Claudia Moyer, both as agent care manager threes, both at the rate of 19.72. Newton is effective 8/11/25 and Moyer is effective 18.53 rate per contract. And the last senior services is the rescission of Catherine Musaki's agent care manager group. One information line in the clerk reports, the promotion of the man who drove clerk type is three, effective 7/21/25 from clerk two. All appointments pending drug tests and physical where appropriate, and all actions involving salary or propositions being created are pending salary reward group.
Some emotion on the four things Tony, four appointments that Tony mentioned.
I'll just make that motion.
Okay. Only question?
Just do a motion.
So is motion? Is it just the prison or all of them? Okay, so motion just on the prison?
Make the motion, then we do the promotion for prison.
Okay. Only question?
Mr. Fedora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
And Mr. House?
Any new business for the board?
I do.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to make the announcement that I did a bill of duty this morning for recycling and the fall cleanup, and it will be awarded next week.
Any other new business? Salary board, reporter of the next access sessions?
Durin and Hill.
Other comment for salary board?
Melinda Diabert, North Mannheim Township. Okay, so if we could please, could I get some sort of affirmation that the commissioners are going to at least try to look into what I had suggested previously, perhaps adding 2018 and 2019, which would be considered pre-COVID, sales comps, and removing 2021 sales comps to at least try to normalize the values a little bit? Can, can we get some sort of like?
I'll talk to Tim about it. I think I did bring this up to him.
It seems like it would be pretty simple. Like I said, just kind of like pulling up the numbers and then feeding them into your little equation or whatever. That doesn't seem like it would be that difficult.
Lots of things that are supposed to be simple turn out to be difficult.
Well, I'd like to hear the reason why and why it can't be done. Um, because the thing about it is, we're being hit with a double whammy right now. Not only did we wait 30 years to do a reassessment, we're doing it when the housing sales, the market was out the wazoo. So absolutely a double whammy. And anything that we can do at this late stage of the game to try to neutralize that a little bit, I think if, if the homeowners, the property owners get a feeling that the commissioners are doing their due diligence and trying to do what you can to look at some of these values and to help people out, I think, I think that would go a long way. Also, do we know if maybe Tim Barr could schedule some sort of informational session to go over the paperwork and let homeowners know what they need to do in going forward with a formal appeal? I know that he had already scheduled things previously. I believe there was one at Blue Mountain, Pine Grove, Potsville, not sure where else.
North Schuylkill.
North Schuylkill, okay. Not sure how well those things were attended. I guarantee you now, if he was to schedule something, it'd be gangbusters. Be busting at the seams with people because just like Jeff stated, and I know Chrissy is getting bombarded day in and day out. People don't know. They feel intimidated with the process, ill-equipped, I guess. They don't know exactly how to go about doing this. So I guarantee you, people will probably be hanging on Tim Barr's every word if he was to schedule some sort of informational session at this point. I know we're down to the wire on this with the August 11th date looming, but, okay. Tim Barr had stated previously, and this is something that people need to pay attention to. He stated on the radio that there were over 92,000 properties, residential and commercial properties, which were reassessed in the county. Out of those 92,000-plus properties, only 3,400 people took the time to either call or schedule an appointment and sit down for an informal review with someone to go over their property information. That's sad because let me tell you, I can guarantee you, there were changes that needed to be made on people's individual properties. The thing about it is, when people were mailed those informal review, the sheets, that did not have every single stitch of information on there. So by actually scheduling a meeting and going in with someone to go over your information, you could actually see, oh, no, we don't, we don't have public sewer and water. Well, according to this, you do, or you have access to it. No, no, we don't. So, and that affects, that affects your assessed value. Little things like that. You might not think it means much, but it does.
That is why we're doing, I don't know how, what you would call it. We're letting people, if they didn't do their formal appeal and their information's wrong, we're letting them call in, letting, before the, Chrissy, explain how we do. It's like a triage, but I don't know how to explain it.
What we're trying to do is even if somebody files their paperwork for a formal appeal and on there says that they're doing it because they don't have a, a full finished basement, stuff like that, we're calling them, we're trying to get that fixed ahead of time. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna tell them what brought the value down. If they're happy with that value at that time, they will sign a release that they're gonna withdraw the appeal because they're happy with that value. So we're trying to take care of any mistakes ahead of the appeal time and work it out with the homeowner and straighten it out that way.
So giving them like an opportunity to kind of?
Trying to give them better pull-in.
Another bite at the apple.
Right, because when Tim Barr was on WPPA, um, he was interviewed there on the radio. And he had stated that people could use that formal appeal process or time to sit down and go over their information and get it, get it corrected. So it's good, Chrissy, if you're, she's saying, people are doing it ahead of time. That's, that's great. Okay, thanks, Chrissy. Thanks, John.
We're gonna get the impact with us on these.
On your appeal form, that there's something wrong with.
Chrissy, after the meeting, I was gonna ask you to get gentleman's information, a thing, a number, see if we can take a look at it.
Jeff, Uncle Palo Alto, just?
Okay, hold on a second.
Just real quick, uh, just to follow up with what Melinda said. I think it's imperative that the county somehow gets a, a meeting together, even if it's one and you can livestream it. See if the radio could be there, see if, uh, Josh would be there, livestream it. I, I think to get it out to the public, a lot of people do not understand these forms.
Jeff, I, so you get called, I got a call, a lady from Tamaka called me, yelled about the taxes. She was adding the two columns together.
A lot of people are?
And I said, no, that's wrong. And she, she didn't believe me and her taxes were going down.
Right.
But she's like, no, you gotta add them together. I said, no, you don't have to.
Right. And when the clean and green ones are there, it's more confusing and it's, a lot of people don't understand it. A lot of people are just going by the wayside.
Here is the pamphlet, just to show you. We're sending out this form with the pamphlet to all of our senior centers and all of our veterans. It's a pamphlet on explaining more. And then it's a letter saying what it is, then it's the whole appeal form and directions for the appeal form. So we're trying, we're trying to get the information out to everybody. Trying to tell them, make sure you appeal. If something's wrong, I encourage everybody to do that.
Right.
So we're trying, that's what we're trying to get out to everybody.
No, I, I think that's a great thing.
I'll talk to Tim about trying.
I mean, if, if there could be something public, because like I said, you might have had 200 people total at all those information sessions, I think you would have that through the door in 10 minutes.
I chime in on this aspect. The other thing keep in mind, just because somebody is going down, those, that person needs to be aware that even though it's going down, if their value is $205,000.
And they don't think it's right.
It's only worth $180,000. They should still file that appeal.
Right.
And get even lower.
Like I tell everybody, if you think, take the taxation out of it. If you think your value is wrong, no matter what it's doing over here. If you don't think you could sell your house today for that price.
Right.
Do an appeal, no matter what the tax.
Right. I had somebody show me a paper, theirs went down $700, but their property value went up. Over $140,000 over what they think they could sell it for. So if you're, you have to look at the value too. That's the main thing because. Right. Because moving forward, you're going to be taxed and I don't argue about, you're gonna be taxed at that 100% moving forward. So the property value is, and I know the whole Miller's thing, but what I'm saying is that's what you're gonna be taxed at moving forward.
And so if you don't think that's right.
Right.
In any way, shape, or form.
Right.
That value, no matter what your taxes are doing.
I think it would be a great thing if you guys can get some sort of session together, even if it's him doing it.
Even if it's just one and we do some.
Even if it's him doing a Zoom thing in here.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I'm sure you guys can come up with something. I think that would be good.
Yeah, we'll figure something out. Any other public comment for salary board? What's next? I lost my place. Human resources?
Yes, commissioners, in children and youth, set salary for Patricia Lee, clerk type is three. The rate is 18.4613 affected 7/21/25. And two items in court administration, both wage adjustments. Julie Sobel, law clerk, legal deputy administrator, $250 bi-weekly, effective 8/4/25. This is temporary. And a wage adjustment for Merrill Peterman, law clerk, $250 bi-weekly, effective 8/4/25, also temporary.
Any new business? What's in your? Thank you.